Evening, everyone. Tonight is our regular meeting. There is no special hearing tonight. First up, Assembly and Senate members in New York State recognize or have recognized some women of distinction. One of those women of distinction that was recognized by Assemblyman Phil Steck was Brett Harris. We have a proclamation. I'm just going to yell. Brett Harris is a lifelong resident of the Village of Manans and earned the degrees of Doctor of Public Health from University of Albany and Bachelor of Science in Human Development from Cornell University College of Human Ecology. Whereas Dr. Harris serves as President of the New York State Public Health Association, Clinical Associate Professor at the University at Albany Center for Integrated Health Sciences and a Senior Research Scientist at Nocor at the University of Chicago. And whereas Dr. Harris has developed and helped transform New York State PHA through a Public Health in Action Committee and a Mental Health Workshop. And whereas the Mental Health Workshop went on a statewide listening tour of school administrators, teachers, and support professionals to gain insight into the mental health records, mental health needs of students in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas, to serve her local community, Dr. Harris volunteered to address the Village of Manans Board of Trustees from a very professional viewpoint to questions concerning the proposed Addiction Recovery Center at Fusion Recovery. Whereas, for her outstanding career accomplishments, Dr. Harris has been awarded an honor as one of Phil Steck's 2025 Women of Distinction. Whereas, her tireless efforts to improve the health and safety of those who live in the Village of Manans, County of Albany, and the State of New York, Brett R. Harris deserves recognition now and I. Therefore, Brian A. Marsh, Mayor of the Village of Manans, and Seth A. Charis, Deputy Mayor of the Village of Manans, we hereby honor Brett R. Harris. There she is. We're being named one of the Assemblymember Phil Steck's 2025 Women of Distinction. We thank her for her contributions to our community and encourage all Village of Manans residents could you do the same. Onto our regular business. We need a motion for the last meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Warranted five seven twenty-five. General, six thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Water, one thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Total eight thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eleven cents. War number twenty-four. Hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Water, two hundred and forty-four thousand seven dollars and thirteen cents. Total one hundred and eleven, four hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. Arrow number twenty-five, one hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-three cents. There's no transfers.
I'll motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Update on the water sewer project.
Okay, last week, LaBella Associates and myself, Mike Hagman from BBW, met with Newcastle Construction's managing partner. And we discussed the upcoming South End Infrastructure Project, which is now expected to start at the late part of July. Some staging probably will happen in mid-July to beginning of July. And it was a productive meeting expressing some of the concerns that we have and some of the process flow that we're going to be expecting of them. And it was a productive meeting, and I think that they are on board with getting this done in as quick a manner as possible. And we'll be sharing some updates on exactly what the start dates will be for that project in the very near future. Let's segue right to you guys.
I'd like to explain what we're doing.
Sure, so there's two components to the South End Infrastructure Project. One is the award of the bid for the actual construction, which was recently awarded to Newcastle Construction for the amount of eleven million, two hundred and roughly thousand dollars. That's to build the project. There, and there's secondarily some management costs that LaBella, as our engineers, will be paid to basically watch, monitor, review, discuss, et cetera, the entire project from this point until the very end. So we're here tonight to discuss the fees for that piece, which will then be added to the total price of the project in order to get it completed. So Ted is here from LaBella and is going to present that.
Yep, it's Don, EFL Engineer. What's presented is the Instruction Phase Services Proposal. And it includes various components of inspection. As we call it, Construction Administration, which is the backbone from the technical side to the building side. And then all the various inspections required from New York State Department of Health and DBC in order to get the project approved and in service. Also included in there, you'll see some subconsult fees for MWB, which is a requirement of the grant itself. The only change that I'll note, or is this one change that we gave to Brian? The total fee on page five did not change. The only items that changed are the four items related to Construction Administration and Observation move from the lump sum fee to the build time and materials phase estimate fee. And the reason being that at this point in construction, there's a lot of variables based on construction duration, especially with national grids work along Wolfert. So there's a range of duration that could happen during construction that will affect the fee. So therefore, in moving these items to the build time and materials phase, allows those items to not be filled, you know, and if not necessary, that remaining savings will be returned to the village.
Can you describe the different buckets?
For which of these?
Just the task?
Yeah, yep, the task. So the big contract award phase, those two items have kind of feverishly come in drawn. As we've gone through the award phase, we still have some remaining on the contract execution side. And then Construction Administration is the day-to-day management of the contractor and all the subcontractors and the testing companies on site. So answering RFI's change order request from a contractor, keeping the village updated prior to meetings so that they can keep you guys updated as far as when certain roads are going to be shut down, certain water shutdowns and things anticipated. Construction Observation is solely related to the on-site crew member that will be watching our bid specs and standards and design requirements. That's a requirement of the grant and New York State DHO to make sure that the system is put in properly and that we can certify that deal.
What would the reimbursable expenses be?
Reimbursable expenses primarily mileage and.
So just ancillary?
Yeah, mileage and some printing document production cost, you know, of items. And those will be all spelled out under the bill of materials, exactly what those are.
And what portion of this is? MWB, sorry?
The overall project has a thirty percent goal. So we're constantly having to drive jockey that so that it still, you know, it's a requirement of the grant, but you're also, you can't let it hinder product, you know, production or quality. So we're making sure that those hours are spent on the things that there's oversight and where it makes the most sense for both.
Do your board members have any questions? Someone want to make a motion that's such a common.
Wait, is it going to open at the public before you leave?
Generally, no.
Do you have a question? Yeah. Are you just the onsite day-to-day inspectors? You're not the engineers?
We're both, design engineer in the office as well as onsite inspector. Some projects, you know, some state agencies would bring in a different company to do construction based services. This is a better approach because the intent of the design gets to carry through to construction. The items that have been discussed and then RFI's, for example, during the bidding phase, can make sure that there's consistency of those throughout construction. So we have a team in the office who's going to be doing the day-to-day, but in direct correlation with the team on site.
So you move things into the time and materials column. Will your inspector be onsite every minute that somebody's working?
Yes, yep. When, and there's a lot of stipulations. If the contractor is going to immediately start putting together what's called their phasing plan, which in this case, a project that affects such a large, important, busy area, that phasing plan will serve as a living document through construction. And the way we did the bid is that the phasing plan had to have all these rules in place. You need to maintain access for sidewalks, driveways, this and that. You have to ask for prior authorization to work on weekends, holidays, stuff like that. So once that phasing plan starts to come together, the village will be able to share more details on exactly what that.
And who has responsibility if the police department is called out for traffic control?
We ask that anybody notifies, you know, the contractor or people on site. They'll, you know, we, they'll be watching the area. They'll be, in some cases, there'll be two inspectors on site. If there's, if the contractor will be riding multiple crews to try to get different things done. And so we ask anybody, it's free to come up to our inspectors or contractor.
And because it's time materials, how frequently are you going to deliver to the municipality that we use time tubes?
Generally, we will work with the contractor to compile all that weekly. So we can provide that as frequently as weekly will be possible. But I'm pretty sure the billing is on a month basis.
And when it comes to the conclusion of the project, who's responsible for the as-built?
We are working with the contractor. The contractor is responsible for survey extent side of it. And then we're responsible for piling and verifying.
And this couple of the work is only quotable water and no sanitary?
Both, both.
They're actually setting up a field office at eight hundred North Pearl to work with this contractor since, you know, because this goes over such a period of time. They thought it would be prudent to, instead of having one of those sheds or trailers, they're going to set up an actual field office at eight hundred North Pearl.
Oftentimes, when you're doing projects like this with the sanitary, there's problem with back pitch pipes. Who's resolving that stuff?
On-site, they have to verify certain criteria before approval.
So you'll have a survey crew out there making sure that?
In majority of cases, you're welcome to come and see. It's quite apparent that there's, whether it's quantified, it's usually level based. It's not, you know, just a level to make sure there's, not necessarily shooting points from here.
I've seen a whole bunch of guys install sanitary back pitch.
It's not our intent to.
So when you're done with the as-built, how are they memorialized at the municipal level?
However, well, we know there's a piece that's going to go into the GIS system. So that, so the new sewer alignment, new infrastructure will be put into a digital format. But you take the plans and you put markups on them, certify them as as-built, so that becomes the memorialized set in digital or paper copy.
Since the village is so old and it's been a while that there's been work done out there, what are you anticipating that you don't yet know?
You don't know, well, you know, that's really it. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, there's always potential for rocks, unexpected utilities, more extent or different soil condition. You know, you only can take so many shots prior to construction as far as orange go. Before you're spending too much money trying to do it.
And what do you anticipate the timeline of the whole project start to finish?
If you do remember, it lead, it depends two years, but it's dependent on National Grid's work on Wolfert, which the village will share a little more details of that as it progresses. We're not allowed to go on Wolfert until the gas main is decommissioned by National Grid. And so that's more, that's a safety issue related to the fair side, so.
Phil, do you have something quick?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you say it's going to cost five hundred million dollars too?
No. The total construction project is eleven point two million.
All right. How many people are going to be working?
The phasing plan will detail a lot of that information for us.
I will thank you for answering all the questions. I appreciate it.
Sure, Paul.
Construction manager over here. Basically, you're talking about a construction manager.
It's tough because it's not, the contractor is responsible for the plans and the spec notes by their bid. So we can only, we can only direct as much. But obviously, we have to, they know we have to certify. So they know they're going to have to correct stuff until we can certify it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm looking at the construction manager partner. It's going to be an employer of developer.
Correct, correct, yep.
I've been that I worked for private people. And basically, the construction manager's job would be to protect the village.
Absolutely.
And I've been in a situation where I was hired by the architect to be the construction manager on a multi-million dollar job. And it was hard. When you see something, you don't know whether, you know, I go here or I go there. At the end of the day, the responsibility for this person should be these people and us sitting in the line. There's a line sometimes that you have to watch.
We don't think it lightly. We have our construction team very, you know, experienced with these projects of the exact same size and scope. And so there's layers that the village can share of our onsite observers, myself in the office and others, as well as a leader that they can direct questions to on a day-to-day basis, senior inspectors as well.
So when you have your weekly or five-weekly construction meeting, will someone from the village be there, like Hagman or Danny?
Absolutely, yep.
I was just going to ask, who is going to be the liaison for the village for? And LaBella and Newcastle?
Newcastle. Newcastle. They'll be providing the board weekly reports that will be shared with the board. They'll be providing us weekly reports and communicating directly with us, and that will be shared with the whole board.
So are we going to get an agenda of?
We're going to create a dedicated webpage that will tell us where we've been and where we're going next.
And contact lists and everything else?
Don is it for contact?
Sorry, Don.
No problem.
That way, it's clear. Always to Don. All right. We need a motion to approve the contract.
Take a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks, guys. Okay, so along with the South End project, because of the costs and the potential for there to be an overage in the total amount of the total cost, we need to revise our approved bond resolution. Don, you want to?
We have to, exactly two resolutions. We need one for water and sewer. Water is separate than the sewer. The, we have to bend the water one by one million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. It's increasing the bond to. And the sewer is going to be for one million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. But we need two different resolutions. And they have, this is also subject, because everybody's aware of it, it's subject to permissive referendum. So it's got to be posted for ten days after we approve it. And then if the public wants to object to it, they can go out and get petitions, but they're going to need to, it's underneath, it is six hundred and eight, six hundred and ten thousand, votes or signatures override it.
And how many days?
In thirty days.
And we're sure.
Can I ask you any more question, Brian? I don't know if I understood you correctly. This is a question in case of an overrun?
So the initial project, when it was first granted by EFC, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, estimated that this total project, including all the engineering fees, all the supervision fees, everything, was going to be roughly eleven point three?
Three million.
Million? Now.
Which is the number that was just used, right?
That's to build it. From this point forward, to build it. Then we have everything that went into the design already, some work that we did already, including some valves at Water Elite, a new valve for the Troy interceptor that brings the water from Troy to us. All of the rework for doing this in a phasing plan. And then the amount we approved just now to supervise and implement the project. So it is roughly thirteen million instead of eleven point three million.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your knowledge.
Sure.
So I'll move for adoption the bond dated May nineteenth, bond resolution dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, resolution authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of an additional one million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, one million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars bond to the Village of Manans, Albany County, New York, to pay part of the cost of the construction of improvements to and reconstruction of the water distribution system in and for said village.
Second? All those in favor?
All right. Yes, now I'll just bring that one up. Now, I'll also move for approval the following bond dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of an additional one million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in bonds of the Village of Manans, Albany County, New York, to pay for part of the cost of the construction of the improvements to and reconstruction of sanitary sewer mains in and for said village.
Second?
Just so everyone else is aware of this, this is going to be posted on the website. It's also going to be in the village office, the village or the police lobby. It will be posted in three other stations throughout the village. Okay, but I need to watch a little better.
The condition of the road on Oak Ridge off of Park Drive is absolutely horrible. It is literally falling apart. We sought three quotes. And they ranged from sixty thousand dollars to thirty-four thousand was debrow paving. We've used them before, and I think they actually paved Park Drive way back when one of us first built. They were the low bidder. Callanan on a big contract was, I think, fifty-five thousand?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three thousand. And so.
Sixty-four.
Okay, so I would like to execute that as soon as possible as an emergency, thirty-four thousand, oh twenty-seven for debrow paving.
And it's also including part of Gibbs Circle as well.
Also including the intersection right at where Gibbs Circle meets Park Drive.
Yeah, it's kind of broken. I'll make a motion to accept the bid for DB paving for thirty-four thousand, twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All right.
And this is reimbursable by CHIPS funding.
Hundred percent?
Hundred percent.
Good.
The Village of Manans has signed a participation agreement with the Alden County Healthcare Cooperative. The first meeting that we will be having as partners in that group is this week. We'll be sharing those updates and hopefully some ideas for savings for next year. The approval of the youth coordinator, we're going to table that to six-two. And I'll speak more about that issue as soon as we get to my report. The fire department and I have been talking about creating a wall downstairs as you come into the building to separate some of their storage areas from the entryway. It will help preserve and protect some of their equipment and some of their supplies, hot dog buns, et cetera, behind some walls and some doors. This is a solution that is going to be reimbursable through Phil Steck Sam Grant that covers improvements to this building. We got two quotes from, I'm sorry. Two quotes, one from McGurk Construction, who's done work for the village before. The other is South Paw Construction, who's done work for the village, village court, the windows and the police department. McGurk's proposal was sixteen thousand. And South Paw's is forty-two seventy plus the cost of a double, a double, a double door, which we would buy ourselves for three thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighteen cents. I talked this over with Kirk, who is the building person for the fire company. And he left the idea. So I would like to begin work on that and ask the board to consider that proposal for execution.
I'll make the motion?
Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
Along with that, we did an energy audit for this building to try and improve the energy efficiency. Based on those recommendations, one of the thing they suggested was that we insulate the other section of the building. Their investigation, there is literally nothing but dust as insulation in that section of the building. So every dollar that we spend heating it goes literally right out to the roof. We have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in free improvements that we got through our Climate Smart Initiative grants. There were two quotes for this work. One was an estimate between twenty-three and twenty-six thousand dollars. And a local company right down the road here across the border in Albany was nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Quite a difference.
Yeah. So one was using cellulose. This company is using blown-in fiberglass.
Is that a good basis?
Fiberglass is much less dusty. And so it's the better solution. It's also the cheaper. It's a dazed project, and it is a hundred percent covered by our nicer grant claims. So I'd like to move forward with that project. It'll take about a day and.
Yes, I'll make a motion except for, is it MIG or Meg?
I don't know.
Okay. Four thousand, five fifty-seven.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, a couple of things before. Mary Jane, do you want to go over the tax warrant information? I received from the treasurer the tax warrant for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six tax year. The total tax to be levied is two million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred, thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. That breaks down to two million, eight hundred, thirty-eight thousand, eight twenty-two point oh nine in actual property taxes. We levied water and sewer with interest and fees is one hundred, twenty-one thousand, hundred and thirty dollars. These bills will go out June, by June first and are due June thirtieth. Without penalty.
Yes.
June thirtieth without penalty. I gotta sign this tomorrow. Mary Jane, you gotta sign this tomorrow?
Yeah, we gotta get the board to move you to number.
Okay, so uh we need the board's approval in order to submit and sign this tax warrant to the president.
Make a motion for the uh authorized mayor to sign tax warrant.
I'll second that.
Hold on a favor.
All right.
Uh, for a number of years, we've had a leak in this stairwell. Uh, we'll be addressing that in the very near future and I'll have some proposals to everybody in the next, uh the next, hopefully the next meeting to fix that. Uh, I am applying for a Albany County sewer or soil and water conservation district grant to redo the culvert at Hendrick um by Kingston. Uh, the grant uh allows for funding up to forty thousand dollars for rebuilding undersized and replacement of undersized culverts, et cetera. Uh, the culvert there needs some attention, has for years, hopefully we can get that covered by Albany County. Providing more information with uh developing them back um shortly. Last, was last meeting we talked about the trolley?
More than a month ago.
A couple of meetings ago, we talked about uh the potential donation of the trolley for uh use by the village. Uh, it is my understanding that that trolley is likely to be donated to us. Uh, I'm gonna worry about that hopefully in the next few weeks, that's uh. There's a lot of them here. Um, anyway, that was a.
Where's the trolley going?
Uh, so it's going to be basically used for a fire department and fire company activities, uh can be used for youth activities, et cetera, seniors, uh parades, that type of stuff.
Who drives it?
Yes, sir. No, no, not me. No thanks. Uh, it has to be a uh a compatible driver.
Do we have people with that license?
Uh, it's a day, yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was different.
Nope. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled with Tim and I on the twentieth at one o'clock to talk about the uh route three seventy-eight potential work that Department of Transportation is looking into uh and some of the concept that they have for bringing the Manans Bridge down to grade at Broadway, uh and some of the uh potential for eliminating some of the cloverleaf sections that we have. And this is all a segue into our next meeting, which is to talk about the potential Troy Manans Bridge replacement, which is only eight years potentially away. But it's uh an exciting segue into that potential construction project, which is about two hundred and fifty million dollars. Uh, regarding Albany Rural Cemetery, uh, they have elected me as part of their grounds committee, we'll be having our first meeting sometime in July. Um, we talked about a focus group for talking about improvements to Polk Switzer Park, I'll be trying to set that up for hopefully Monday, May twenty-sixth. I'll be reaching out to the members who are going to be part of that uh focus group. We just took delivery of several new picnic tables for the park. Uh, so we'll be working to install those. Uh, the police department recently replaced all of their LVP, their flooring to LVP. Uh, the picnic tables are paid for from Phil Steck's twenty-twenty-three Park Sam Grant. And the police department floor is paid for from Phil Steck's twenty-twenty-five uh Sam Grant that uh covers this bill. Uh, last meeting, we talked about the police management group joining council eighty-two. I just want to clarify exactly what the village board voted for. Uh, under New York State's Taylor law, we cannot prohibit anyone from forming a union under the law. Okay, the, the law, what we did was we recognized them as uh as council eighty-two, as representing, we did not approve, we did not need to approve anything with unions under the um, it is illegal to prohibit anyone from joining uh and uh organizing as a labor group. Uh, I just want to make that clear. Uh, there's been some talk, as I'm sure everyone.
Hold on a minute. And I can wait till mine, I, about the other two supervisors' unions.
Oh, yes, the uh, uh, there was some comment about whether the uh executives uh in the leadership positions of Colony and Troy. Uh, there was a comment that they were not organized under labor unions, they, they aren't. Uh, and the contracts have been provided to us, just want to clarify that as well. Regarding the youth director position. Uh, in the interest of fairness to both of the applicants who have expressed interest in the youth director position in the village, I have asked both of the interview, of the candidates to interview separately with this board during executive session, which is where we handle all personnel matters. If and when we are ready to proceed with those and after those interviews, we can make our appointment in open session during our meeting in June. This will hopefully give us enough time to prepare that person for the summer youth program, which starts on July seventh. I'd like to discuss the chronology of the events regarding this issue. It is less than two months from the start of that program. Time was of the essence. Mr. Nevins has spoken about his desire and his interest in providing the village some services regarding the youth director position before, and seeing as we had no applicants at the time, I met with him on Tuesday. We could go tomorrow and discuss the youth position and if he was interested in stepping in and filling that role for us. We had a positive meeting and after that meeting, uh, I enthusiastically wrote to my colleagues on the board that I would be referring that suggestion for consideration at tonight's meeting. I also immediately wrote to NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors, to get their opinion on potential conflicts. Wade Beltramo, who is this general counsel, senior counsel for NICOM, forwarded me the language of the law. It's section three dash three hundred and it's in section three that it specifically mentions the conflict that exists between a board member and an employee. I immediately forwarded this to counsel Steve Raphus as village attorney. I immediately reached out to Bill and told him to hold tight and that we would be talking. The law clearly says that a board member cannot be an employee of any kind, regardless of whether it's full-time or part-time. It doesn't matter within the village. I shared this with a Steve Raphus, discussed this with Steve Raphus. Under the law, if we were to hire a youth director and they were to be elected as village trustee by operation of law immediately upon signing the book and becoming a village trans uh trustee, they would forfeit the employee role. The law is simple, you cannot be your own boss and as a sitting member of the board of trustees would therefore manage themselves. I discussed this with counselor Ra- Raphus. I followed up on that question and I'll read you what three dash three hundred says. Says, no person, no persons shall simultaneously hold an elective and appointed village office, except that not more than two members of the board of trustees, maybe members of each board and commission, members of the board of trustees may elect be elected a single commissioner in charge of the village departments, except for as provided in the zoning article in this chapter. I know that doesn't mean much, uh, but the first line says it all. I followed up with Wade Beltramo at NICOM and I asked him, what are the mechanisms for an exception? Are there any to this law? He emailed back the circumstances with which an exception could be made. Steve, would you chime in here and talk about what, what we?
Sure, we have kind of a unique circumstance with Bill running for um uh the position of the village trustee. Uh, the New York State Attorney General's Office issues opinions on, on various questions that arise like this. The majority of the opinions deal with the issue of a person who is a trustee who then applies for a position or an appointed position within the municipality, in this case, the village. In that particular circumstance, they say can't be done. Um, it's a violation of the law and in this particular case, violation of the village law. However, this is a little different situation. And there is a New York State Attorney General's opinion that says if the person is appointed to a position as an employee of the village, before they become a village trustee and then become a village trustee, there is the potential workaround. It would require a local law passed by the board of trustee permitting that uh identifying what the potential conflicts are in this particular case. Um, if, if Bill were to be, if the board were to vote Bill in, if you win, let's get chronology straight. If you're, if you're appointed first and then if you were successful in the election for village trustee, the board would pass a local law subject to uh public comment, which would identify the areas that you as a village trustee would not be able to vote on. For example, issues related to budget, uh, management rights and responsibilities with respect to that. Uh, so there is a workaround, so in speaking with uh with the mayor about this, and actually I spoke with uh with Molly about this today as well, I suggested interview vote, see what, at some point in time, I assume prior to the election, the board is going to take a vote because it's subject to uh a majority of the vote for board voting on it. And if Bill is the person that they decide, uh, that the board decides by a majority vote is the right person for this job, then if and when the election occurs and if Bill were to win, then I, working with the board, uh, would forget, put together a local law, we'd identify what the potential conflicts would be uh that you would not be able to vote on because you can't be your own boss. Uh, and we'd deal with it that way. So that's why I suggested interview everybody, let the board decide, and if this becomes an issue, we'll deal with it.
And so that's, that's essentially where we are today. It is our intention, and I asked Bill uh uh yesterday if he would be willing to interview tonight after this meeting in executive session, and he, he will be.
Yes.
Uh, and uh, and so that is where we're going to uh go with this tonight. Uh, uh, the, the other applicant, we will interview on a different date, she misunderstood uh exactly uh the timing of this meeting. Uh, tonight she thought exactly at six o'clock she would be here, so we're gonna um uh need to interview her at a different time. Um, and then the board can make its decision and discuss the, the, you know, the, the positive attributes of, of each applicant. That is the fairest way through this process.
Bill, do you, and since this affects you obviously, do you have any, do you have any questions at all?
No.
For me, okay.
I, I understood the law.
Yeah, okay.
I, I looked at it, so I, I understood the law.
Good.
So thank you for clarifying it to the board.
Yeah, yeah.
I have one question, if I may. I'm just curious about, when we talk about evaluating the possible conflicts, assuming we're Bill elected trustee, were he the youth director, that his ability to vote will be on any matters relative to that position, not the other aspects of the village, right?
Oh, that's right.
It would just be if.
There would be anything that would affect that, that youth coordinator's position.
Yeah.
We'll say budget, um, I don't know if there are any other employees, it'd be staffing, it would be salary, it would be benefits, things of that nature. He would not be uh in, in this hypothetical, he would not be uh able to vote on those things based on the local law the, the board would have to pass.
I have a clarifying question, um, is the second interview applicant, um, is this their first opportunity to interview when they're not there? Is, is that what I'm understanding correctly, or the applicant did not show up for the?
So she misunderstood the timing of, of when this was going to occur, she assumed that six o'clock was when she would be.
My children had started the um program and I wouldn't want that seen as sweet as.
I was just saying the same thing, you can't understand the timing of a meeting, but we're supposed to, they are supposed to trust her or him with children, that's not, that doesn't make sense.
I, I can't help but be concerned, um, and I can wait till public comments are, are there.
She's interviewed with, with myself and the deputy mayor and uh and.
And I, I, it, I'm sorry, but I'm not sure that I trust that judgment either as a taxpayer, I, I am concerned as to how, how, how the second applicant, whom I think the first applicant and only applicant um is overqualified and an admirable leader, has committed his volunteer hours countless to our community and is a community member, as well as a taxpayer. But I will not be, oh, okay.
Let the process play out.
But what process? You, you had already offered him the position.
You did or something, uh, cause like I said, I want this to be on public record so I can follow the chain of commands, but what I, I, I'm questioning your judgment and as a taxpayer here, I want to be involved in that, in that process. So we'll have to figure out a way because it is concerning how the second applicant may not even be a resident, isn't here.
Yeah, what's that, second applicant's qualifications as well? I think as a community, we deserve that understanding, we know what Bill Nevins's qualifications are. And in my opinion, you should step right into that role, no questions asked, you should step right into that role.
Thank you.
So to think, hold on, I'm not finding out. So to think that somebody can just bypass the whole process and not have to be here, I, I totally don't agree with. And I think that would be a strike on that person that at this point really should not be a candidate anymore for that role. There are many, there are many people listening. Fully go to a program that Bill Nevins is supporting and people have been doing that for years. There are people in this community that will not send their children to a summer program, not knowing that person. The last two years, we had Samantha Hall, who I believe is a community member, if she's not, she is a teacher as well. She knew the children, Bill is a community member, he knows the children, there should be no question who that role is going to be.
Go ahead.
So, um, I have a question about the general, we've broken the process for position-wise, so apparently, um, you said, Brian, that there were no candidates, so you approached Bill, this sounds like.
Well, just to get the chronology, Bill expressed that he would be interested in filling in, should that, should, should we not have anybody? And, and, and should we, should we ask him? And that's why uh we were getting in the timeline of needing somebody, we're getting close to the timeline. And knowing that Bill would be interested in that role, I approached him and asked him if he would come in and meet.
Okay, it just seems that youth director is a, a great job for a teacher in the summertime. So it seems like there would be a lot of opportunities for people, you know, in the Manans, in the Manans Village, in the town of Colony. Um, and I was just wondering if there were a recruitment process whereby people in the school district knew that there was such a position open. So, I mean, I find it hard to to believe that there were no other candidates. I guess there, there are just so many people, I think, who would love that type of job, if I were a little younger, I would apply to it.
How long has the position been?
So, uh, we did Sam, Sam Hall, who resigned from Manan School, uh. as a teacher, which is why she resigned from the, you know, from the youth director position as well. Reached out to her colleagues at Menance School, I believe, and, and we posted it there. John put it.
It was on Facebook, it was on.
A clarifying question just again, if we have a qualified candidate, why are we looking everywhere under the sun? Just, we have one here that's willing and able.
That's not how recruitment goes. We, we had this conversation on Tuesday.
Did you have this other candidate? Did you have this other candidate when Bill walked out of your office? Have you?
No, the next day.
And the candidate didn't show up tonight, which is where the interviews are. Again, I just have.
Again, she was not notified that we were doing interviews tonight until last night, when she already has a tutoring session as a teacher at Shaker Junior.
So you're telling me a board of people?
Oh my God.
Hey, I mean, I had a lot of people here. I'm sorry, Steve.
I was just curious how long the position was posted. You, you told me that it was posted or where it's posted, but how long was it posted?
Since, since Sam Hall resigned.
I know when.
About a month, two months, three months.
Three months.
Three months. You've had no candidates and ample advertisers.
We had two candidates. One candidate was a student at Siena College with no, no experience at all. Then Bill, Bill came in a month and a half after that, and we got the other one. And that, and that's the only two people that.
So you have a resident who is well-known and has been the president of the school board and has been involved in every youth aspect, sports, fundraising, making sure that every kid can participate. Walk into your office and say, I'm willing to take the job. You've called me in. Talk about it, expand upon what, what, what we can do to try to bring it back to what it used to be with field trips and a, a, a great program. And then the next day you go, oh, somebody who doesn't live in Menance also has interest. Let's do our due diligence. After I have a great meeting with a great resident who only thinks of children, only thinks of their being and involvement, and we go, hmm, okay, somebody from Kahole's or Colony. Let's go and get them to live in Kahole. I don't know why. If this man has done everything, as, as long as I've known him, to involve children and make sure that they're safe and have a, a way to.
So let me just address that. Okay, that's why I recommended him.
Okay, so what changed?
Hold on, can I?
Sure, but what changed?
First of all, there was working through at the board level. Everyone loves to say that we don't have transparency here. But when it came to this board, sitting down and discussing these issues, the positives, the negatives, the potential conflicts, advice of council, et cetera. Okay, that's what we're here to do tonight. Okay? Instead of doing that and letting that process play out, you know what happened. Okay? The, wait a minute.
I know what's happened. A lot of times things happen.
Let me, let me finish. Okay? I enthusiastically recommended Bill. And I still believe that I think Bill would do a good job. The question is, where does the conflict play out in the realm of these possibilities? The board deserves the opportunity to speak to the other potential applicants and make its own decision.
It's all hypothetical. It doesn't matter. It's hypothetical. If he wins.
That person is not even here. Let them be here. They're not here. So they don't get the right.
So can you please mute everyone?
I did. I keep, I keep on muting.
So this, this is, this is the process. This is the process we would go through with any potential employee, any employee.
This is what people can't wrap their head around. You had a candidate and then he finds another candidate.
It has nothing to do with the fact, other than the fact that you teach, somebody who teaches at his school. That's it.
You have a person who lives in Menance.
I agree, and I recommended him. And, and let's, let's, let's face the fact. He was my political challenger, okay, when I ran. To think that I would put politics ahead of choosing the right person, that's where politics was quite.
This is what it looks like.
That's what you're doing. That is what you're doing. So don't.
Okay, so I guess, Brian, can we back up a little bit? So you just talked about how we all as a board needed to meet and discuss all of these, these things, right? But you sent all of us an email ready to appoint Bill. There was no, you were like, let me know your thoughts, right? Like, to me, that was, you made that decision and we were moving forward. Three days later, I get an email, wait a second, we have another candidate, where I already, you know, I already heard that you wanted to hire him. So this is where all of this started because you maybe took one step too far in letting Bill think he had the job.
I, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that. And in, in.
So now.
Insert the facts that Steve and I needed to have dialogue regarding.
But you should have done that before you gave him any paperwork. This is where the chain did not follow.
It's, it, the understanding, the understanding was that there was some flexibility and was there a workaround that the village board was willing to, was palatable enough considering the circumstances? That was, that was where we needed to have that.
But if you went to an interview, no, but if you went to an interview and at the end of the interview, they handed you a direct deposit slip, a W and I.
Pending board approval, and that was extremely clear that the board makes that decision. I don't.
But at that point, would you think that there were other candidates that were potentially going?
At that time, there wasn't.
But that, but that's what, as you, if you were the person in Bill's.
Of course.
Can I ask? And it doesn't matter that it's Bill. I'm saying anybody. It was me.
The board needs to interview all of the candidates. Again, for transparency purposes, we want to know all of the information and make a decision as a group. That's what we're doing. That's what tonight's meeting is for.
So should also be a closing ending, but when you were going to end seeking applicants for a civil service or public service position.
There's, there's, it's not a public service position.
Okay, but it is a taxpayer-funded position.
That doesn't matter. It's not civil service. Thank you.
And then decided to renege on that is, is, is bogus. And you have a full room seeing that and calling you out on it. It's incredibly difficult to also see that you can't own it. But you can own a poor process you decided not to follow when it makes sense in your role or in your, in your, in your, when, when it helps you in your, your political running mate. I don't think that that's.
Excuse me, none of these, none of these people are my political running mate, other than Nick, who I ran with the last time.
The youth, and that's where I'm here to speak on, that at the point, it cannot be heard.
I, I don't doubt.
We can't hear you.
Um, whatever happened, happened. It doesn't matter for me, which it does matter for me, but it does matter for me because I have full faith. And everybody in this room, that was full faith, that Bill Nevins will be the candidate that's chosen. And I just want to stand Dr. Nevins because I know that, but Bill has been this community, his heart with all these kids. My, since I think they're little, and everybody sits here. He's been on the board, he volunteers. All the kids that he gets involved, loves, they love him back. Now, he doesn't want to do this job because he's been paid. He wants to do this job because he loves the kids. He would do the volunteer list. So I don't doubt for one second that he will be a opponent. So hey, this is kind of.
It's public process and it's something that we have to do. Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I grew up going to that art program and, and it always has been historically and traditionally someone from the village. I mean, I don't know, as far as I can.
Rihanna, she lived in Latham.
She was in Menance.
She originally was, taught at Mononson. Samantha Hall lived, taught at Menance School, but lived in Latham. I mean, so there's a lot.
Yeah, I know. That's, that's from my knowledge. I mean, and whenever I, I grew up in the village, I mean, like everyone that ever did that art program, I knew, you know, was a member of the community. And just to hear that they're not from Menance, I don't know, to me, that didn't go over well. But, um, yeah, and, and you know what? I have nothing but good things to say about Bill. I mean, what he does in the community in terms of working, you know, in Menance School and at the basketball program and the Little League, I mean, you know, he's definitely someone that I like to see working with the young people in Menance.
Thank you.
To be honest, can, can us, us folks over here on the internet speak? It, I don't think that it really matters whether we are still in, in the village or not. I used to live in the village. I'm actually living now and my daughter goes to school in North Colony. And I still would stand for Bill Nevins a hundred percent. The mayor before you, she and I had a direct interaction and issue that Bill Nevins stood up for me and my child and other people of the community. And even though my child is not there at that school anymore, he still is connected to my child, okay? And I'm here, not as a, a village member anymore because I don't live there anymore. But because I know that this man does everything and anything he can for every child. He, even putting his own family aside, whether it comes, whether it comes to basketball, whether it comes to events that we have at the school, and to hear that he is being pushed aside after being told that he has this position is disheartening. And I support, and I'm doing other things with North Colony School Program. So I do support them, absolutely. And I think there's great value to the folks that are there. But this, the way that it's going about is just really not okay. So if you have folks that are disheartened about the situation, you won't have a program for this person to take over. There won't be any kids to go to the program. You need to hear what the public is saying. Never mind the politics. Put it aside.
That is the end of my report. Let's go to Tim.
I hate to say it after all that, but I don't have anything.
Nick.
Similar to the emergency paving on Oak Ridge, I'd like us to look into paving Cornell's Drive.
Seven as well.
Nothing to add to it.
Um, tomorrow from 12 to eight is the school board vote. We'll be voting on the capital project, budget, library transfers. And there are two positions up on the library board. Um, if you want to wait and vote, from six to eight is evening of the arts where you can catch the students performing. A reminder, they did close school this Friday, so the kids are going to snow day in May. Um, and next Saturday, May 31st, they're doing a PTA breakfast. It will not be at the school, it will be at the park from eight till 11 a.m. So go get some pancakes in the park. Um, another thing I want to make recognition of is we had a resident, Susan Handerhan, who was honored last night by the Special Olympics. She was named the New York State 2025 Lifetime Achievement Coaching Award.
Hold on, I'm gonna go find my notes. Just so everybody knows that July 2nd, June 17th, it's the village elections. There's two trustees positions out. The candidates that are running are Seth Harris, Tim Lane, Lisa Newman, and Bill Nevins. If you want, this year the state started a new thing for villages. You can do, we can do early voting, but it's all by mail. It's, and we have absentee ballots. Both of those applications for those are on the website and available in the village office. The people that are on permanent absentee ballots have already been, the ballots have already been sent out. Anybody that needs, that's not registered to vote, Ken, we have a registration day on June 7th at the firehouse lobby from 12 to 5:00. And like I said before, election day is going to be June 17th from 12 o'clock to nine o'clock right here. And I won't be at the next board meeting. I'll be in a conference. So we're gonna look. Thank you. Mary Jane will take care of my part of it.
Thank you, John. All right, now we go to public comment. Bill.
A couple of things. Now, I'm delighted to see that East End of the side in Philly has added, as well as McDonald Circle, Menance Glenwood Room. I finally had Ruts and Pop over there. Plus, I wish to thank our PDW guys for getting the job done, which has been needed so badly. Now, remember, I had raised the issue about while visiting the west side of 250 Broadway buildings, I observed several items, including one bookshelf too close to the green dumpster and white colonial style door. And I had already reported it to Don Hander in Menance League. Now, now didn't, Brian, didn't you say you said we're gonna speak to Captain Kirk about having that stuff taken, removed? I didn't. And what story? Will we remove all that stuff when we remove?
I'll talk to him again.
Is it still there? Because I was there last night. It is. Now, while sweeping the short bleachers at Menance Little League Baseball section, I discovered a low level seat, you know, it's loose. That's where you put your feet on it. And it's, it's loose and it's, the seat needs to get replaced with a new low level seat. I already reported this problem to Menance League, Don Hander, as well as. You know, Jerry Long, the foot. Now, although I don't like the idea for our village to increase the water rates by 5%, but I'll support the 5% water rate increase only if we love the club. And while I'm, while I'm delighted to see that our village posted one sign on Brookside Avenue, Broadway Junction Saint, no turning vehicle, all turning vehicles must yield right away to pedestrians, which I'm delighted with. However, I wish to propose posting all turning vehicles must yield right away to pedestrians on other village streets and on Broadway Junction. It's already written here, so there's no need to say much. Now, I'm requesting that our village ask DOT, state DOT, to install directional left light signals for the following places, Simmons Lane and Broadway Junction, and Menance and Market Roads, plus Road, Broadway Junction. They need to be done because it's too hard to make left turns, especially during rush hour traffic times. Now, it, it has been since 2023 that 412 Broadway Brown House was damaged due to fire. And this house is in the process of being rebuilt. Now, my question remains is, why has it taken so long for this house to get rebuilt? We need a short discussion.
He is doing it himself. He's, he's doing it himself. He's not hiring a contractor. He's doing it himself. He's, he's been working with Lyle on it.
Oh, I see.
And he also got hurt.
Oh, sorry to hear it. I hope he gets better soon.
Thanks, John.
Well, I've got one more thing. Now, I'm glad to see that the branches of one Broadway tree, which has had covered two yellow marker sticks, connect the utility pool number nine, a water filtration tube, and probably have finally been removed from those two yellow marker stick. And I like to thank our PDW guys for getting the job done. So what, what can I find out about when that stuff on the west side, 250 Broadway building will be removed?
I'll be talking with Kirk sometime this week about the, the law, so.
All right, I would appreciate it. Thanks for letting me talk.
I listen to his lines.
Okay, thank you.
First, in reference to the last meeting, I put my hand at the end of the meeting to comment, and I didn't, I didn't get hit.
Sorry.
I don't know whether you ran out of time, but.
No, I didn't see it.
I was here. I know you. Could have told Seth. But my comment from that, from that meeting was I listened to a, a long, long production about naming law day. And I found it ironic that two months to the day, when you proclaim law day, you're closing part of the judicial, the law system in the judicial department. That's just my comment. And then in reference to the park, you mentioned that Susan Wall, she was, she's a good teacher. She's good with the kids. I went to the park program every day last year with my grandchildren. You can ask Donnie, I was a thorn in his side the entire time. And he probably spent way more time up there than he needed to do out of his busy day. So I don't know if that comes from her not really knowing what to do with the kids, but it failed. And I think it failed because she's not a resident. She may be a teacher that works with the kids in the school, but it's a whole different ballgame when you're out in, in, in the wild with the kids. If it wasn't for a couple of those older counselor kids, it would have been complete chaos. Just, just my opinion when you're thinking about hiring somebody out of, out of the village. Just, just my opinion when you're thinking about hiring somebody out of, out of the village. My other, my, one of my other things is, Donnie, it's my, it's my spring complaint about the railroad and, and not digging out the gully. I, I know it's hard to work with these folks, but the last day loses a brain we had. I went up and checked and it was an inch from the tracks. One more storm and the water will be banging on the house on the other side of the street for me. Something has to be done. I don't know if we take legal action against these guys, but it's dangerous.
My fear is that the water's gonna wash out the tracks.
Well, I, I don't understand why it didn't. The last time this happened and the used, what used to be Dignum's house, the first house from the tracks on the north side of the street, you could have surfed in your driveway. And the water was splashing up the side of our house. It actually broke their basement window.
I, I remember when they used to do that on a fairly regular basis.
Yeah.
And that with the back, the big diggers and.
Back when us old people were growing up. So we used to catch tackle and stuff in there because there was no brush. There was no nothing. They let it overgrow. It's dangerous.
Don, will you reach out to your contact?
Thank you.
Hi, Ryan. Did they go out to Dignum on Oak Ridge and Gibson?
Yes. Three, three, three bidders.
All right, I'm going to get that thing.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Uh, when we're on bids, how many bids were actually submitted for South End project?
Four.
And uh, Newcastle, where David Oles in the middle lies.
Second. By a million eight.
Okay, I know where I'm at. Uh, I heard a number of forty thousand for that culvert next to my house.
Uh, so that's the amount that we're, we're, we're potentially getting maximum amount for uh, applying for repair, replacement of that culvert.
It was my understanding when the engineers first came in a year and a half ago and gave that friction fiction, that that culvert was supposed to be included in the process of that project.
No.
And also, has the nine more work on Wolford even been started yet?
Any day now. There was some issues with the intersection of.
Wolford and North Pearl. North, it's um, DOT property, so they have, they had to get DOT permits and DOT dragged their feet.
And our understanding is that has since cleared and they'll be starting that immediately so that.
And will that project now start on Amsterdam?
Our project will start on Amsterdam, yes.
Okay.
Can we have somebody come out on Menan Road and, and either trim the tree branches? The parking is very hard. The trees are huge. Cutting them down completely would be wonderful, but I'm sure that topic will happen. They're up into the wires, so parking your car, everything's falling on them. Can that be done?
We can't go into the water, the trees that are in the wire. Like, we can put a fall up in the Epsom Bridge.
Thank you.
They're gonna hack the daylights out of them. They don't, they don't do a pretty job.
I don't care. It's, it's a mess.
They are not.
Just a dovetail on that, that bush at the corner of Menan Road and, and Broadway is still covering almost half of the curb. They really need to cut that back into the person's property or cut it down. I'm not for getting rid of bushes. I know he can do it, but I'm not for getting rid of like something green all the time, but I just worry about.
Is it the one with the beans?
No, it's across the street from that. That two family brown and white. Huge bush. It covers, it's right on the corner and it covers almost half of the curb. So kids have to almost go in the road. A, a woman pushing a stroller or a gentleman might have to go into the road to get around it. It's just not safe. But besides that, have you made any progress on the parking changes in, in the village? You were working on redoing the whole code of that because you talk about horse and buggy stuff. Are we anywhere closer to having normalcy so all the roads have alternate parking or move it only to one side? I don't know. It's just a mess and nobody is consistent with it. And it, and there are some streets that it's almost virtually impossible to bike on because if a car comes, you got nowhere to go. Walking dogs is tough because there's no curbs on some, no sidewalks on some of those roads and parking on both sides. It's a mess. Somebody needs to really make that a priority.
So we've been working with a, a, a traffic engineer uh, to write the, write the proposed regulations for alternate street parking within the entire south, uh, you know, uh, central, central village area uh, to mirror what some of the streets already have. So John is aware on that?
This, we're, the, the other problem we're having with it is we're dovetailing on that. We're gonna be putting some other laws in there. So we're trying to get, instead of doing, amending the law three times, we're gonna do it one time. So it's gonna take a little longer, but if that's number one within that is the ultimate parking. And also changing the language about where, where you can park, like any spots there are no parking. It's in, but we're also gonna be adding some
Traffic.
Traffic control.
Changing the court, if we, if we incorporate in the village code, speeding, stop sign, traffic light, et cetera. We then can capture some of the fines from those tickets because it's under village code, not New York State traffic. So doing it in all one, one vehicle.
That's fine. I just want to know that it's getting worked on because it's been years that I've been asking about it and it's not getting any better. There's more cars than there were before.
Agreed. Thank you. You're welcome. Sure.
Um, can you provide clarification on the kind of funding as it relates to Albany County's civil service position for that coordinator position? I just wondering if the hiring policies, policies are the same as the Albany County uh, civil, civil service? Or if there are different hiring policies because through the village's company?
It's a part-time appointed position, so therefore civil service doesn't apply.
Okay, is there a transparent, um, you, you spoke or referred to a process that you're following as it relates to hiring for this, for me, this company? Is there a process, a final process?
You mean?
Is there, is it written down what the process is for hiring these temporary positions?
Surely that process would include interviewing all of the applicants.
Understood. Is it, you spoke of that this is a process after you have emails to the board um, that you're sitting up with, you then learned of another applicant. So I was wondering, and you had said that you were following the process. I don't want to be referred to, you know, you know, just a bit of a dead um, basic uh, kind of discussion. But I would like to just, I don't know, brush up on what the policy is. Should this be an issue in the future? And maybe it's worth kind of coming up with some little laws to, to identify. Should it be a Menan's resident? Should there be residency requirements, whatever that might be?
So the village recently, I can talk about the residency requirement. Uh, most municipalities are going away from residency requirements because it's hard to attract talent.
What is ours?
So our, our residency requirement was recently amended to include counties abutting Albany County. So you don't just need to live just in a county. You don't need to live in a county.
Do you know when it was amended?
Couple of months ago.
It was actually moved back in August.
Um, most municipalities are going away from residency requirements, including the city of Albany is no longer requiring their police officers to reside within the city. It's firefighters. So it's, it's hard to get, it's hard to get. I understand, I understand the advantageous nature of some of the rules. Others are different. So.
Well, I just was thinking more accountability, um, and just equitable practices and ensuring the best interest of the youth. Don't actually have a voice in this room, but uh, really trust us with either voice. And so on behalf of them and those that can.
Sure, all of the. Sure, all of the.
Moving forward to help establish laws that would protect that.
All of the village, village code is on our website. You can read all of it. Uh, it's right there. It's the village handbook on the website. Uh, that can be requested by foil. So, yeah. Go ahead, Paul.
I need to write down my list. Is Brookside still in the queue for paving?
Eventually, yes. This, this was, this was, uh, we're looking potentially at the fall. And it really depends on how much of the funds Simmons Lane takes up. Uh, uh, we're, that's why I met with Albany County and asked them to partner on that expense, considering the amount of traffic that they send through Simmons Lane. It shouldn't be exclusively our responsibility to pay for that. So depending on how much we can get paid from them, that'll tell us what we've got left in order to do Brookside. Um, and again, or it's gonna have to talk about some of the others like Cornell and see exactly where that fits into the paving plan.
One other thing, but is, is it developed, screwing the, the handicap study for the village sidewalks and.
Lobella is, yes. Lobella worked on us. You mean the one that's on the website?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't see on Brookside, um, when you go up our side of the street versus this outside of the street. And you get the treats.
Yes.
There's.
The replacement of those panels is included.
Because of all the paving over the years, now we have ramps in our driveways and I'm sure they don't need ADA requirements.
So are you talking up near the train tracks?
Yes, you can't get to the train.
There are several panels that were. There were several panels that were in need of actual concrete replacement and, and we're gonna talk about getting those accomplished. In fact, our group can do those themselves.
Oh, that's not what I'm talking about. And you're talking about ADA accessible. Somebody's pushing somebody in a wheelchair up my side of the street and they want to get up to where Charles lives. In order for them, they gotta go out in the street and then go up over the tracks because when you the sidewalk dead ends right into the trees. And all the ramps on all our driveways now, I'm sure they don't need ADA requirements, so an inch and a foot.
Don and I'll take a ride over there and look at it tomorrow. My understanding.
And I understand what you're saying, Paul, but I don't know because of the railroad property.
Yeah, the, the, the train tracks, they will not come within ten feet of the train.
They go up there, so the piece goes this way, but there's no piece that then connects it out to the road.
We'll, we'll look at it tomorrow. Yeah, let's, let's look at it tomorrow, Don, and see what.
Yeah, because once you pave it again, it's gonna raise the level. All the gangs. And so the, the ramps are gonna get even steeper in our driveways.
The work that was accomplished by the grinding, that is all ADA compliant.
Are they coming back in sand?
Right, yeah.
We talked about that, how it gets very slippery.
Uh, we can look at.
Yeah, that, you mentioned, she mentioned the slippery parts of where they ground, right?
Yeah.
What's that guy's name? Holt? Holt? I think his name. Sorry. Um, I can reach out to him tomorrow about the slippiness. How many spots do you think?
I mean, in front of my house, they sanded half of the whole panel. You can ice skate out there when it's raining. And I heard you did that last year.
Okay, I'll uh, reach out to Cole tomorrow. Okay. Anyone else for public? Go ahead, Mike.
Is there a date of the transition of the court?
Uh, so we, yes, uh, so, uh, forgot what the exact date is. I think it's uh, June sixteenth. June sixteenth, all court cases regarding traffic will be transferred to returnable to the town of Colony. And that's to uh, give us uh, a minimum of almost thirty days. They, let me start over. Town of Colony has traffic court every Monday. Uh, and so the date that falls, so that the returnable date for cases when they issue a traffic ticket would fall uh, on month from uh, June sixteenth. So June sixteenth and later, all traffic tickets will be returnable to the town of Colony uh, on June or July eighth. My understanding is that we will be doing a file transfer with the town of Colony Court and the clerks. Two clerks are already working together on all of that and they will transfer any open cases. Criminal and otherwise, there's roughly a hundred criminal cases that will need to be transferred. Uh, the judge is trying to finish all those cases up here locally before those cases get transferred.
We refresh my memory. Now, when these cases go to Colony and traffic stops, are we getting any money from that or are we just making it stop?
So the answer is yes, and that's why we're rewinding, we're rewriting the code, uh, the traffic violations on our, our own village code. For instance, the city of Troy writes ticket under their city code rather than New York State traffic law. And therefore they collect the majority of the fines, even though Colony will adjudicate the cases. In Colony, they will get a piece. The state will get a piece and we will get a piece. So yes, go ahead.
Ryan, going back, it doesn't, not to use council, but you program, and I don't know if this is for the job better, but maybe when you're describing on the student's counselor, will we be bringing back the um, trips and things to offer for the kids and adults? Is because those who go in it too, because years ago that park program wasn't just, you know, you go there in colors. It was, it was everything. It was trips. It was sports. It was art and crafts. Um, I'm just wondering if that's a way it's gonna be brought back to work.
Yeah. So that's something that I, I did talk about with, with Bill as a possibility. My understanding is that we'll liability insurance for that, especially considering transportation is extremely cost prohibitive. And so that's something that we're gonna have to look, uh, the positives and negatives about doing that. Uh, especially considering if we do have our own transportation vehicle, what are the costs associated with that? Those are some of the things we're gonna have to discuss with our insurance providers and, and figure out exactly how we can do that and try and limit that risk.
I remember when, yeah, when I was a counselor, it had to do with the aid of the counselors too, like that played a factor in it. And I feel like when Brianna was kind of at the end of it, the counselors were so young, there wasn't enough. Um, but that just brought back Carol. Yes, I was actually on a trip with Carol's kids when Carly was born and she called and she was like, can you take my kids off? Um, so that just triggered back, but we definitely, I think, something that find a way to bring it back.
Something that we. Anyone else?
I have a question online.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, this is Dara Blanchard. I live on Glenwood. Um, any updates on what's happening with the park that's behind Glenwood Road, the Polk Switzer Park?
So which, what, what's your question? Which is, which, which piece, Dara?
So I guess part of it was there was gonna be assessments of the properties on either side of the um, entrance to the park. And then we were gonna.
We're gonna talk about those at the next meeting. We'll have both reports of the, the various pieces and, and, yeah.
Next week. Perfect. Thank you.
And then, and so for the board members, the uh, I believe we put in the dry box some of the uh, documents.
Um, I hope you can hear me. The, you said that the park committee was gonna be on Monday, May twenty sixth. That's Memorial Day.
All right, uh, Lisa, I'm sorry about that. That's why I was opening my team there apparently. Uh, I'll reach out and we'll figure another date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot. And are you, when are you going to announce the water rate increases?
I didn't catch that, Lisa.
The water what?
Are, the water rate increases, are you going to uh, announce that or is it just gonna be?
So the water rates will, the, the water rates will be increased uh, based on the, the bill that you will get in January twenty twenty six. All right, anyone else? Bill?
Just quick, Brian. Um, for those who don't know, there was information shared. I appreciate the fact that you spent off and acknowledged the fact that when we discussed, there was no one else involved in the hiring process. You acknowledge that. I appreciate you for that. Um, I appreciate everyone that showed the support. Um, I'm back to the home. I appreciate the fact that you're bringing everyone in for an interview, give the board an opportunity. Um, I'm not sure who doesn't know me, but I'd be happy to discuss and lay out my plan for the park the way we discussed in the office, so I don't have a chance to understand it.
Yeah, I, I think that's what we're gonna be doing about it. Hopefully ten minutes.
If you're looking for references, I think this entire room is here for you. And there was a bunch of children here earlier. I think they were references legally, but uh, you should listen to children.
Um, anyone else? Bill?
Bill, with Bill Nevins, I think he should get this job. He does a very good job in Eagleville. And I want to give my recommendation. I want to give him a rep. You're welcome.
Fine, um, I just had a comment. I just noticed the light at the bottom of Menan Road. Like, it turns green when no one's there at night, but it doesn't turn, turn green when no one's there in the morning. I was just curious like why it turns green at night when no one's there, but it doesn't turn green uh, in the morning when.
Don has a contact there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's definitely DOT question. Yeah, that light's a mess.
I'll fix it. Thanks.
All right.
Well, yeah, then.
We need to go to executive session for personnel matter.
Yeah, make the motion.
All is a favor.
Thank you, everyone.
Don't pass rocks like that.
Don't pass around the lights on the hallway.